I show at four thirty. Call this meeting to order. If Angie, you could please call a roll.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey is absent.
Yep, and I had a text from that he wouldn't be able to make tonight's meeting. Alrighty, Commissioner Lumberman, if you could give us the prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, we ask that you would bless this meeting and help us to make good decisions in the best interests of the taxpayers of Grashit County. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. Okay, anybody have any changes to the agenda? I guess we're not gonna have L, no administrators report tonight. If no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Pass. We have an agenda. Matt, you see anybody online for public comment?
Did you see two people joined in that I'm not familiar with? I'm not sure if either is wanting to make public comment, but if they need to, feel free to unmute and go ahead.
Alrighty, if anybody'd like to make any comment, go ahead. If you're on a cell phone, I think it's star six. Anyone, anyone else here today wanna make any public comment? Alrighty, let's move on. We're, let's see. So we're moving on to the ratification on the Purdue opioid settlement. Mike is... We're supposed to have Mike Behan online?
I don't see a mic joined in right now.
Okay, why don't we go back to it if he does come in? Then, next thing on the agenda is a consideration of moving to a public hearing on brownfield plans 116, 120 East Superior in Alma. Believe me, I need a motion to move to a public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay? We're in a public hearing and Jim, I believe you're handling things?
Yeah, I'm, for those who know, I've done it a few other times. There are Greater Grashit handles the county brownfield before. So that's the reason for me being present for this. And this is a project that, and I see him up on the board, Zach Everett and Nancy Gallagher are proposing to do, which is going to be three buildings that they own in downtown Alma, south side of Superior. Basically across from the opera house that the college has. And what they intend to do is remodel the building quite intensively. They're gonna have twelve second-story apartments, two downstairs apartments into it. Currently, their office is the far easterly building downstairs, and then they have three or two other commercial sites in each of the two remaining buildings. Again, just as a little background, why this is a brownfield project is one of the main things that you can do with brownfields that most people think about is polluted sites, well, gas problems like that. But one of the mainstays of it can obsolescence. And in the case of this, these buildings that are in downtown's been built well over a hundred years ago. Really are obsolete for current standards of anything that we'd wanna do. Hence, but what we try to do with the brownfield authorities, you just try to make the playing field even. Since if they didn't have the opportunity for this, somebody could take a look at, well, should I just go buy some land outside of the area? Build from the ground up. You don't get any surprises when you punch in the wall or anything. And build it from there, and then your downtown continues to dilapidate. So this allows them to capture the cost that it takes to go in to do some of these, and they're all approved costs as they have an architect and through an environmental firm that does it. Allows them to capture some of these costs back so that makes it financially feasibly able to do this. And this is quite a substantial project. We're talking about an investment of almost three and a half million dollars to do this, so it's a big one. The reimbursement that would come back to them, it would be a little over six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Again, those are dollars that what you do is you have to pay the tax dollars on it, but it freezes the value that it is now. So the additional dollars that come in, you have to pay the tax and then it comes back to you. So up to this amount of six hundred and eighty-six, seven oh seven. Once they collect that back, that's considered the brownfield then is done, then they pay the taxes in the future, just like anyone else, and the rest of them come back through. And since this is also an obsolete property district, there'll be a period of time where it does freeze the value. And so in the case of this one, the state will be, will have to approve this also because they, they will be paying back portion of it that they collect on the school tax. So about roughly fifty-eight percent of the payment back out of this will be state funds and about forty-two percent is local. So we even get a little bit of a bigger pop because we're getting some state dollars back into our local economy through this situation in the payback to it. So it makes it a really pretty good program for all of us downtowns to have it. This is the first one I think we've done, and it wasn't Ryan Smith doing it, which he's done them in all the communities now. But it's starting to catch hold, and that's what we're really hoping for, that you're seeing this. And every one of Ryan has done these, and the one in Ithaca, Breckenridge, Alma's now, and in St. Louis. As soon as they get them done, they rent out just bang. They really are really popular with people. And mostly, you know, just because you get the older style feel of it, but yet the modern, you know, amenities to them. And so it really makes them really attractive apartments, usually higher ceilings and some things like that. So been really nice additions and it looks well. So this has now been through our brownfield authority, it's been to the city of Alma, it's been to the city DDA because it's in the downtown development district, so they have to approve it also. If you so choose to approve it, the next and final step will be going to the Michigan Strategic Fund, which we'll have to get approval on a state basis for it, which is scheduled down the road as we go forward with it. But nice, this is a nice plan that looks good. They've spent a lot of years and time to get it to this point, and we're hoping we can put the thing together. But here's to be a really nice viable project for. Happy to answer any questions. Good, or Zach, if there's anything that you wanna ask the developers themselves. Zach's gonna keep prax and law. They've got people on board that will actually be doing the, on construction site and everything else for them, so.
I'm painting nothing.
Yeah, yeah, no, he's not gonna be painting or doing anything. He's gonna keep prax and law, so.
I think they're great things for our communities. I think the communities that they've done these in, it's just, it's really enhanced the whole downtown. Alma just looks great. Breckenridge here, they've just done a nice job on them, and I'm supporting these folks that make the motion to go ahead and approve this.
Second.
Motion by... We need to come out to do that, yep. Yeah, fourteen apartments, wow, that's...
It's all sounds win-win. I mean, is there any con to this at all?
Well, I guess the con, if there's a con to it at all, you could say, well, we're not, we being the public entities, aren't collecting the tax on it right away that you would. But the other side of that is, though, if you didn't do this, it's just not feasible, so it wouldn't happen. So, you know, beyond that, it, I can't really think of a true con con to it because if you don't have these pieces in place, it never happens. And in this case, once they're paid back, or, you know, we always think twelve years seems like a long time, but boy, it doesn't seem like so long to me anymore. And when you think back twelve, so you get through this, you get repaid back, and then you go on to the normal tax roll. And these buildings will be there for hopefully a lot of years to come, so. There's really not a lot of curveballs to them. It's pretty straightforward, and as long as people understand, they're not getting six hundred and some, I mean, you know, they're not getting a check for that. It's dollars. They have to still cash flow, write the check for it, and then it comes back through the brownfield authority in order to pay them back for it. But beyond that, I really can't say there's a con to this, I guess, unless somebody didn't want the downtown building fixed up. I mean, really, I...
You look at twelve years, what will that building be?
Yeah, exactly.
Nobody does nothing to it.
I mean, the improvements they put in here, I mean, these are, they're looking for well over thirty years plus on it. They're already a hundred years old, so it could be really long-term, so. That would, honestly, I can't really think of a con, so. But good question to make sure.
Fourteen apartments, that sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Sure use those.
When Ryan did the ones in Ithaca, I missed his open house, and he gave me the code to go in, and he called me about a week later, says, you better go over there, or you're gonna be walking in on somebody's, because they're just like boom, boom, boom. So it really was pretty quick. It, they won't, like I say, the big thing's getting them done. Once they're done, now they'll, they'll rent.
Alrighty.
I guess I move that we come out of session.
Okay, do we, do need to ask for any public comment first? Any public comment at all on this? Okay, hearing none.
Make the same motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lumberman to come out of the public hearing, second. Seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, nay? Pass. So we're back in regular session, and we're looking for a motion to approve this. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion passed. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You, Jim.
Thank you, everyone. Alrighty. We're to the... Maybe we did that. We're to the consent calendar. I did have one thing I wanted, I wanted to pull out. I don't know if anybody else has anything. I see there's a notice on a drain assessment, and I think we maybe should discuss about just prepaying it. It's a twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-three eighty-eight. Anybody else have anything that wanna pull out of there? So, is there any interest in us prepaying that? Matt, are you online?
Online, but I think you might.
I'm sorry, sorry, man. Chris, are you online? Oh, we need your mic.
I'm here.
Alrighty, you know, we're at the point that we're talking about maybe prepaying the drain payment of twenty-nine nine. Do you have any comment on that?
Well, I had a conversation with Commissioner Lumberman earlier today, and we were talking about how low interest rates still are and how debt is not necessarily a bad thing right now. But at the same time, I always support paying off any debt that we can afford to pay off. So we, I have no problems being able to issue a check and getting it to, in the drain commissioner's account tomorrow, if that's what the board chooses to do.
And that is the deadline that we need to take action if we want to.
Yeah, it says the payment has to be to them by July twenty-first, which would be tomorrow.
I think a motion that we pay the bill or pay the debt off.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Bunting. We have a second on it?
A move.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Do we need to talk about where it's coming out of the budget or what we have to do to change?
My, my thought was just about the interest rates. I mean, what's, what's the rate on these, though? Drain commission bonds on this one here, I know they're all separate, or somebody's funding them.
Yeah, that information wasn't submitted, so I'm not, I can't answer that.
We gotta be paying three, four percent on them, aren't we?
I think, wasn't the last one three or four percent?
Well, I think so.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, we have the cash and we're not getting nothing for it. Probably just care of it. It's a fairly small drain.
I'm assuming there's no way to take it out of the seven point nine million?
No, not that I'm aware of. They did just recently add some sort of drain or sewer. If it was not sewer, it was more related to drains, to something that would be allowable under that. So I'm gonna be looking at that a lot closer. But even if we, if you approve it through the general fund at this point, we can at a later point use ARP if it is indeed eligible.
Okay, you just wanna do it that way, or you want amended motion to look at that first? Well, we gotta do it right away, don't we? Yeah, okay, never mind. Any, any further discussion? Okay, do we need a roll call? Angie, do you know if we need a roll call?
I can do that. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Motion passed. Alrighty, sounds good. Any, anything else on the consent calendar? They entertain a motion to approve that?
A move.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passed. Very good. Okay, I believe we're up to Dan, aren't we? Oh, committee reports, yep. Alrighty, Mr. Lumberman?
I don't have any report. I haven't had any, any meetings since our last meeting. And Arcade Township had a shortened agenda last week, so there's, I've got nothing.
And let's see, I went to a Seville Township meeting. The treasurer said, and this is good news, that she had never seen so much money from July taxes come in so quickly. So hopefully that's a sign of the way the tax collection is going. And also, they had a work group that cleaned up the Pine River of debris, so they could go down it in a canoe or something. And also, their Lumberjack Park is putting together kayak rental. They're gonna have twelve of them to be able to go down the river. So that's, that's all good news. And it was just wonderful to see the community turnout in the rezoning issue. I don't think we've ever seen over five hundred people come to a county meeting, so. Mr. Bunny?
I just had one meeting at Wheeler Township. It was a short meeting too, because it's July, so it was quick. Other than that, that was it.
Thank you.
Couple of my townships are just spreading gravel and buying gravel, trying to buy it to places they can get it the least expensive for. Watering down the roads are frying and everything.
Sounds good. So we're moving on to new business. Now, Dan, I believe you're up.
Thank you. According to the agenda here, I'm gonna be talking to you guys first about the cabinet radio site proposal for your consideration for American Rescue Plan funding. Should be in your packet, kind of an executive summary on it, but basically what we're proposing is the creation of a miniature radio tower site. That's why they call them a cabinet. The utilization of existing tall structures, infrastructure, that way you don't have to go to the expense of building an entire tower, buying property, et cetera, et cetera. So I've been in collaboration with Mid Michigan Medical Center Grashit for nearly two years, or maybe a little bit more than that, talking about this. And then, of course, naturally COVID hit, and that just, that completely ended the discussion on it. Because we were talking about possibly even going in at that time, some sort of partial, they would pay for a portion of it. I would pay for a portion of it from nine-one-one side. Obviously, COVID put a halt to all of those kind of things. So I am asking the board, again, kind of in the same lines of the last time I was before you about emergency radio communications with the portable radios. This is the same kind of concept, except this is actually creating infrastructure capacity, numbers of channels and stuff like that to support emergency services communications within our population centers. City of Alma, St. Louis, and those townships surrounding, which we have known radio issues for a number of years, ever since we went to the eight hundred, because they're in the river basin area. I did get support from the sheriff in a letter of support. City of St. Louis, I spoke with Mark Williams from City of Alma. He supports it, but obviously, they're not in time for the meeting, did I get a letter of support? Marita Haddam Schiffman from the hospital just today, because I kind of rattled her chain a little bit. She sent me a quick email as a letter of support. So there are stakeholders that will benefit from this, emergency services as well as the hospital and nine-one-one are on board with this. We talked about it at the last nine-one-one authority board meeting last week. Forty Board is on board with me making this request on your behalf, or on my, on our behalf, so. Any questions?
What is the, so by doing this, what is the hole that we're filling? What, what is the exact, the exact problem?
Problem is, is when officers are on portable radio, and they are in the downtown areas or near the river basin areas, they have lack of communication. So they will hit their PTT, their press to talk button, and they will not get enough signal to be able to reach us. Presently, there's only one tower in all of Grashit County, which is located down on Johnson Road near Alger Road that supports all Michigan Public Safety Communication System radio transmissions within the county. So this, the gap is the Pine River Basin area that this will significantly improve. It's not going to be a silver bullet. You know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to make the argument saying that it's gonna make a hundred percent improvement, you know, and it's gonna fix all the problems, but, you know, another issue, and that's why we kind of also picked on the hospital, is that anytime any public safety personnel enter the hospital, that's it, they're not on radio communication with us anymore. So the only way we can reach them is by telephone. By putting this antenna and basically a repeater right at the top of that, will have that penetration capability right into the building as well. So we expect to have a huge benefit that way, as well as the schools. By no means am I a radio expert, but with all the years in and stuff like that, I got a pretty good working understanding of it. But heavily constructed buildings with a lot of steel, brick, block, they block radio signals, just because of the way that they're constructed. So we have to come up with ways to try to get around that, and that's, you know, the creation of this kind of a site would fix that. Or at least greatly mitigate it. I hate to say fix, because...
So if the radio doesn't work, so, you know, somebody needs backup, or there's an emergency report or something that needs to be made, it doesn't work, what do they do? They call on their cell phones?
That's quite often, usually, usually the thing that we run into more is because they're in their vehicles, their mobile radios have more wattage, more energy. So those can penetrate out and reach that tower or the nearest tower. But the moment that they go onto the portable radio, which is typically carried on the side, that has less wattage, and that's where we run into the problem. So we're able to dispatch them. If they're in the car, we're able to dispatch them. They're able to reach the scene. They get out and, you know, let's say that they go into one of the businesses in downtown St. Louis or downtown Alma, and then they go inside that building, and then after five or ten minutes, we're trying to call them and check, see how they're doing. We get nothing, or we might get like a beep or what we call a balk, and we don't know what's going on. So we're trying again, we get nothing, so then we're sending, we're making phone calls, we're trying to send them a text, we're trying to call the facility, you know, because we don't know what's happened to them. We don't notice if we need to send backup. We don't know what's going on, and that's why we need our coverage.
I have a couple of questions for you. Okay, is there a lot of interference from the wind turbines? I've heard people say from TVs. There isn't. What about putting an antenna on top of a wind turbine or a water tower?
That has been considered before. Number one, there would be interference if we did that, because the wind turbines are connected within on their own radio network. Their frequency range may be different, but co-locating two antennae next to each other, even if you're on different frequencies, they're both radiating energy, and, you know, you just, you imagine it, you know, two different people, and they're, they're gonna be duking it out, and whichever one has more power is going to win. And so that's why it's, it's just not even a thing for us to consider.
Okay, what about water towers?
We utilize, we are implementing the water tower project for the simulcast for the fire rescue side for paging in St. Louis. But again, there, we run into the same kind of problem, like the St. Louis Water Tower along the Pine River. I can't remember the name of the street, but along the Pine River, yeah, Crawford Street. That one has got AT&amp;T, Verizon, and again, you get into that same conflict of they're pushing a lot of energy, and if we put our stuff up on there, they blow us off the air. So the, the antenna that we're putting up on top of the Gidding Street Water Tower, we wrote a contract with the city of St. Louis, and I don't remember the legalese language, but basically, it's like, we're there, nobody else is allowed to be up there. If you allow somebody else to be up there, and we have interference issues, they have to take their stuff off. And it's because we want to treat public safety as mission critical. That's, that's what's first to us.
Sure, probably in the next twenty years, we'll have different technology to maybe just set up a balloon or something.
Right now, we're stuck with land mobile radio technology, which is antennas. You know, the state eight hundred megahertz system has come a long ways. You know, there's a lot more connectivity. No longer on the state system, you know, when most people think about land mobile radio, they think you're pushing a button on a radio, and it's going out over radio waves to an antenna, and then it's going out over radio waves to other antennas and to vehicles and things like that. On the state system, you're doing the same thing, but you're pushing it, and then it actually gets into the fiber network. It's getting pushed out over the fiber network, and that's why the state system is completely statewide. So sheriff could be down St. Joe County, and I could be up at Horton Hancock, and we could talk to each other. And we're not having to go over, you know, it's not tower to tower to tower. It's actually using the fiber.
Well, also underground, like a lot, a lot of the, like cables or, like cable vision is putting their things in the ground. Is that a...
And that's fiber, and that's, and that's the fiber, and that's in this, in the executive summary, it talks about... potential costs of fiber backhaul, recurring charges of fiber backhaul, which would be you know, whoever the, you know, Wind Telecom or CAS Air, whoever would own the fiber, there may be a monthly recurring charge. I, I have a monthly recurring charge for the next gen nine one one network down at Central Dispatch for two fiber backhauls because I have to have those redundancies. We're doing the same thing where I have to, I'm going to have to work with the peninsula fiber network for fiber backhaul for the radio project. This is called an MCC seventy five hundred. I know that I've spoke to Jan about it and I think Chuck, I don't think I've spoke, you know, because the nine one one authority in December, we went forward and you know, we have, we're going to acquire that on our own.
I guess the thing I'm asking too is like, this is probably the best you can do at this time.
Yes.
Antenna on top of the hospital.
Well, the, the best, the best that we could do would be about 1.5 million dollars, which would mean the acquisition of property somewhere, you know, we would, we would need to look for available property that using GIS, we would want the highest ground possible in the northern end of the county. And then buy that, you know, three to five acres and then construction. And then also infrastructure, running infrastructure to it, running, you know, having somebody run fiber to it. So, and that's why I say it's, it gets into 1.5 million dollars just to do that, just to build it. And then you get into the purring costs of maintaining it and stuff like that. So for me, that's not even something, because the shame of it is, is that if, if you create, if, if the board proceeds with this, this site is not the county's site. The state takes ownership of it. So the hospital doesn't own it. And it'd be the same thing if we decided, you know, if the nine one one authority had its own money. Say we had the 1.5 million dollars and I wanted, you know, they voted and we bought land. We build it. And then the moment we did it, we'd be like, here you go keys to the, you know, to the state. We turn the keys over to the state, but the state will continue to charge us for maintenance and service on it. That's just, that's the way that they operate.
So Daniel. Mike, go ahead.
Hospital wants us there because they have problems in the hospital. Police have to respond. They need backup. Their security works well. And we've had problems with independent towers before. Dan, can you speak on Wolverine one?
Oh, my goodness.
Nightmare with, we have one on Wolverine Pipeline Tower in Alma. It was fire side, but it was a nightmare and we were getting charged to have the amount to use that tower until we could get it relocated.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's the, and that, you know, that was a private handshake agreement 20 some odd years ago. And obviously it was, while it was total at the time, that was the handshake agreement. And then they changed hands and it's became Wolverine. The tower was never serviced, never maintained. So eventually it became a liability to them. And at one point in time, they basically, they told me, they said, you guys don't get your stuff down off of there? We're just going to bring it down. And so we really quickly had to do that. And that's, and that's why we're working on the St. Louis Water Tower. Water towers are not optimal either. You talk to city of St. Louis or you talk to other municipalities, many of their DPW or their engineer folks will say, my water tower is for water supply. It's not an antenna. So municipalities don't really, aren't too keen on that either. They're willing to work with us because they realize that public safety is so critical.
Isn't it? I gotta ask you this question. When you have an antenna on top of a water tower, wouldn't that be like for electrical storms? Would that be a?
They're, they're heavily grounded. They're heavily grounded. We're having to go through a full engineering planning. So you have to consider wind loads, ice loads. And the same thing will go into this. Even this being mounted on top of the hospital, the state will be doing all of that stuff. So I won't have to be terribly involved.
Good thing with it is the hospitals on board with it, the hospitals.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
Yeah, that's, I was really super pleased that Merida sent me the letter that she did today. So she, the hospital's not going to charge me or anybody, any rental fee. You know, for it. You know, they're like, like Sheriff said, they're on board with it.
The reason I'm asking the question was, I wondered if you needed more, like you mentioned, putting it at the hospital. Do you need another place to put an antenna? So you can still get better frequency.
No, this will help immensely in Walmart, Meyer, everything out there in that area. Some of the buildings are pretty dead too to talk about.
What I want to do also, Commissioner Bunting is we'll get this in place and we'll see the improvements that are made. I, right now, I'm going to suspect that there will be other weak areas. The first one I can think of will be the Riverdale area. Again, Pine River Basin and stuff like, you know, right now, when we send deputies out to Riverdale, you know, Elm Hall area and stuff like that, they go into just somebody's house and it's terrible.
What about Wheeler in that area? Wheeler Township?
Just depends on atmosphere. Extra has a lot to do with carrying the waves and stuff like that. I mean, it has a lot to do with it.
There's a lot of variables. There's a lot of variables. And that's why I would not, I would not come to you recommending, you know, let's build one here. Let's build one here. Let's build. Could we do that? And we would really, really enhance communications. Yes, but potentially we could also be, it would be somewhat wasteful. I would, I would want to take a little bit more of a pragmatic approach and say, let's do this. Number one, the reason why I started reaching out to the hospital is there were no other radio towers that we could mount on at the time. And number two, city of Alma, city of St. Louis are our population centers. Grashit County, roughly forty two thousand souls. City of Alma is just under 10,000. City of St. Louis is six, seven thousand? You know, yeah, depending if you count the prison populations and stuff like that, it'd be more. So I mean, that's, you know, that's a third. That's, you know, that's, that's a third, you know, or whatever more of our quarter to a third of our population in that area. That's where the bulk of the runs go for emergency services, you know, Alma, public safety, the sheriff's office going to Walmart all the time, you know, and other industrial areas that are outside of the jurisdiction of the city of Alma and the city of St. Louis.
I also think too with technology that you can buy a vehicle today where you have, you can hook up internet in your car. And so maybe within a few, five to 10 years, you might have a better vehicles that you can have a better technology in that.
Someday Jeff Bezos will maybe come to our rescue, but I can't hold my breath. Yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't help though the two.
It doesn't help for the voice communications and, and even that, I mean, that's, that's relying on Verizon wireless antennas. So again, that's relying on ground infrastructure. So I have no silver bullet for you.
I'm just asking a question.
Oh, of course. No, I wish I had one, but I don't.
I'm just curious to know if there was anything else. And also you got people listening on YouTube and it's kind of, you'd like to know too.
I, I appreciate the, the questions and I'll do the best that I can.
I think you guys do a great job. I hear you guys coming and going all night long.
I have a couple of concerns, I guess, about it is that, and I don't understand all this radio stuff, you know, my phone works here and there and I get tired right don't work, but they put a tower up in the south of the county. And when you talk to the fire departments and they got in this eight hundred megahertz radio, that, that was going to be the silver bullet for everybody that was going to work. When they got the south side of the county with down there, that would be great for our policemen and this and that. So they put this tower up. And, and then we just bought a hundred radios. And we're going to get them on eight hundred megahertz and they're going to be more powerful. They're going to be doing this, do this. And now you're saying that we don't have enough antenna power for these radios we just bought. The other thing that I was wondering about is that we've not heard, it looks like we're going to fund these radios over two, two bytes of this money. Didn't we buy them all at once? Didn't we get them all at once?
That's my understanding, Commissioner Smith, is we bought them all at once.
And then we were going to like keep 75 of them and all the rest back to some company in Mount Pleasant or something like that.
Correct.
And I think the thing that concerns me the most is that the last couple of approaches have been last minute. I mean, you don't even have letters for, I mean, you just had somebody from the hospital. They have time to write a letter. I don't know. Have you been thinking about this for two years? It's like it's all rushed right here today and we need a 300 grand or whatever the number is. And, and we don't have, I don't have any time to even take a look at it. I mean, it's, it's, you're talking stuff that I don't know anything about. And I think even though this money is given to us, I think it's a lot of money to spend and I, and I'd like to, I'd like to talk to the sheriff. If I'd have, I got this stuff about three hours ago.
Absolutely. Well, that's, and.
I'm working and, but if I'd have got this three days ago, I'd have probably been on the horn to Mike or to somebody I'd been on the horn to Dave Nelson and asking him some questions about this, you know, I, I'm not doubting this, but I, I don't know if we're just adding more and more to add more and more, or are we, are, is this really our need? Because when, when we, we got the tower on the south side of this county and we get the eight hundred megahertz, we're good. We're really going to be good. And when we get the Verizon thing hung on there, it's going to be good for the policemen down there because they're on Verizon phones. And, and we should be pretty good in the county. Well, I can, I have a Verizon one. I can tell you four or five spots that don't work coming north, you know?
No, I've just heard Commissioner Smith recently from the state that the tower that is going up down at Rainbow Lake, they're actually not going to be going live now with the state system on that because there's no money.
Oh, I, you know, I was to a media rainbow lake last Wednesday and the guy who organized that and works for the state said they'd be going, they thought they'd be going live by September first.
Yeah, that's, I just talked to, I can't remember his name, but I talked to a guy that actually works for the Michigan Public Safety Communication System.
I understand what's going to happen there because then they're lined up the thing of Verizon, whatever they put out there after that. They can't get that out of.
Extra revenue.
Yeah. So I mean, like I say, I know nothing about it, but boy, I just hate to have these come in that, you know, it's like the radios. We found this deal today, like somebody called you up and said, you guys got seven million bucks and and if you get these things today, we can buy them for three, $4,000 a piece. We'll take them all, you know, we're going to get a rebate back. We're going to sell them. I haven't heard anything about if we've sold them, we've done anything with them, you know? Somebody asked me, I hate to tell them, I don't know. I don't know, you know, and I take you at your word of what, what we think we need, but I'd still like to ask some questions. I mean, I, I, like I say, if I had this three days ago, I'd have been calling Mike. I've been calling, probably dating Nelson. You know, I, I just would have been asking some people about this so I could at least have a better bit of knowledge about it. And me having any knowledge about it isn't going to make it any different. But me spending taxpayer money.
Sure. Makes you more accountable to your constituents. Yep.
I'd rather tell them, at least I looked at it and I think it's right versus I don't know. They brought it and said it was what we wanted and we did it. Yeah.
No, it's, the, the radios were very last minute. This project is not last minute. I'm just trying to take advantage of an opportunity with ARP because I can tell you for the next probably six to 10 years, the nine one one authority is not going to be able to afford to do this project.
And there was something in here about paying money. It was six or $7,000 a month. I mean, we'll probably pay it for a while or whatever.
That's, that was the request. That would be the request because there's, I can't remember.
If, if, if you had, if, if your budget, if we had this thing up and the extra funds, could your budget handle it? I mean, could you handle it? Are we going to get five years down the road, still be able to pay the $7,000 a month or whatever?
That I can afford. The nine one one authority can afford. We are, we are healthy enough. We can afford.
Those are questions I, I looked at, I thought, well, geez, if we have, if we have a turn down or whatever happens, you know, with this, this funding.
But I also thought when you bought the radios, it's because the radios you have now, if they break down, you don't have parts to put in them.
That's a different, it's a different megahertz or something. It's a different, it's a different.
It's hard to repair. These radios are, most of them are 11 to 14 years old and you just can't repair them anymore. I can repair a knob if it doesn't turn on and off, but other than that, you can't repair much on these anymore. You can buy batteries for replacements. They're really, really old and they are, I am at the bare minimum of radios for guys I have on the road right now. Some guys have a share.
We don't have these new ones?
No, no, yeah.
No. We still. Bought them about a couple of months ago, a couple of meetings ago.
We still need to, I need to meet with the police chiefs because we need to discuss some of the options on the radios, like templates. And I'm trying to think of a way, because I, template I realize is a jargon term to the commissioners. What talk groups, what, what frequencies? And that's not even the right word either, but what channels?
Alma has their own private channel.
Sure. I can understand it. Yeah.
Listen, me, so we have to make sure we got frequencies I want on the radios. Alma has to make sure.
And, and these new radios offer the encryption and.
I mean, this has been probably three meetings ago, we did this. That's six weeks. They're, you had to get them by the day.
They're, they're spoken for. I've signed for them. They're spoken. We do own them. We just don't have them in our possession because one, we have to do this template thing first. And then that template has to go down to the state, be reviewed by the state. Also possibly because of the encryption, it'll need to be reviewed by the interoperability committee, approved by them. And then, once all that's improved, they send the template to Procom. Procom actually does the programming of the radios and then they get issued to the officers. It is not a, because there's so much technology involved, it is not a fast process.
We don't want these things to get old before we use them.
It's, I, I'm not going to let that happen. I'm hoping to have them deployed by October at the latest. I would hope it would be for them, but the thing is though, is the templating thing is because the state has two or three people that review and approve templates for the entire state of Michigan.
But it sounds like we're a little slow getting our part done to get it to the state.
I have to, I had to wait in, in order to get in on the agenda with the police chiefs. Because all the police chiefs need to agree, you know, there's a template. It's tomorrow morning.
I would believe if we're giving them $3,000 radios or whatever they are, we're buying for every guy in their department and stuff, they'd probably be on the agenda pretty quick to say, let's just get these guys going. I would think if you give them stuff free. They're not free, but I mean, it's taxpayer money, but I, I would think if you're updating what it is and I, I think they would be, why aren't we doing this? If I was a police chief, you know?
Do you guys have enough for everybody to have one?
We got 25X. We only need 75.
New ones?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I, I push.
How, how pressing is this? How pressing is this today?
If you guys want to table this and have some discussions and stuff, it is not pressing. It is.
This is just for me. I, I, this is just me, Sam Smith. I, I, I would really like to table it. I'd like to just talk to a few people.
That's, I would encourage it.
I don't know anymore than I did when I just looked at this letter and said, you know, here it is. And I got it three hours ago.
I would encourage you to do some research. You're welcome to contact.
I'm not going to research no megahertz and all that stuff. But then like you're going to build it tomorrow anyway.
I'm talking here. This, if you guys approve this tonight, this would probably not be online until fall of next year.
I, I, I like to table it, Dan. I like to make a motion to table it until the next meeting and, and now I got something. Okay. Yeah, no feelings about it. I'm just spending people's money and, and I'd like to say, I'm not going to know anymore about what even how to turn their video on, but I, I just want to make sure it's all right.
It's a little more complicated than like saying you can put the TV antenna on your house and plug it into the back of the TV.
Am I wrong? You guys probably haven't heard of like putting aluminum foil on it.
I want the same thing that you do, Sam, as being a good steward of the people's money.
Yeah, that's all. I, I, I like to, I like to make a motion, we table this to the next meeting and we'll make a decision then or whatever.
We have a motion in a second. Before we get to that, can I ask what exactly you're asking for? Three hundred and eleven thousand gets everything installed and ready to go.
That actually basically puts the equipment up on top of the.
Then you're asking for a hundred thousand.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. You should have a comment in there.
Yeah, I know. I missed a comment.
Okay. 10,000 additional for three years.
That's the monthly fee.
That would be recurring charges.
And that's, I guess my question for you right now is that after three years, if this money is going, you can cut that $10,000 check that stays the same? Does it raise? Is it?
We would roll that basically into our utilities line item budget.
I mean, you have that much funds. Okay.
You're just taking advantage of this funds that we have.
Attempting to, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So Dan, what you were saying though, is that once you get the, the phones or the radios, you need the antenna in order to use those.
No, we can use the system we have right now. This will just enhance communicators.
All the same system. Everything's all the same system.
You cannot in the 200 block in North Mill Street in St. Louis by the Busham Rock, the River Rock, get out on a portable radio right now. It's just not possible. It's never been possible in 35 years I've been in.
Even with our new, even with our new eight hundred.
Now with the newer eight hundred radios, you may be able to, it may be spotty. Once you get this cabinet antenna up there, it should cut down to about zero percent that we would be able to get out.
You, you have to think about. You, you have to think about, um, you know, think of the square of Gracha County. And all of the eight hundred megahertz radios, police and fire and EMS is all served by one single tower right now. Located at Johnson and Alger Road, so that's actually a little bit south of the scent, the geographic center of Gracha County. Sometimes they can get some signal from other towers that are outside, like, uh, Commissioner Bunning was mentioning about like Wheeler area and stuff like. There is a tower in the Hemlock area in Saginaw County, so that kind of.
That's eight hundred megahertz.
I'm sorry.
That's it, eight hundred megahertz.
That is, everything, everything I'm talking about.
If you were somewhere between Hemlock and Wheeler, you probably won't use that one on Johnson Road.
Correct.
That one over there in, in the county, it's not like Star Tower, you can't use it.
And technically Isabella County, you can get a bounce off from one or others at the hospital.
Yeah.
Yes.
So let me ask you, what is the worst area of the whole county? Would you say it's Riverdale and, um, oh, you little Sam?
Probably south of fifty-seven is not very well, you know, in, in, in the Rainbow Lake area.
Actually, well, Rainbow Lake, Rainbow Lake, anytime you get into a basin area, um, the.
Maple Rapids.
Yeah, um, there's, there's terminology in radio stuff, um, and forgive me, I'm taking the board's time, but. Um, I'm going to just demonstrate with my pen, okay, this is a radio antenna. And we have somebody out here on the flat, and as long as they can see that antenna with their radio, not a problem. But the moment that you go into a valley, okay, and that person is down here and their radio can't see that tower. That's where we have the problem, and it's likewise when you go into a structure or a building. Your radio no longer, has, it has a harder time, so it's called line of sight. And it doesn't matter what technology you're operating on for communications, it's the old concept of line of sight.
What radio is it, is going to be, uh, state game area?
Yes.
You're going to have problems down in there because of the dust, but, you know, it's also fifty-seven. But like Dan said, our populated areas are up here, where we have a lot of stuff that you don't want to. Riverdale, Riverdale is not horrible, but it's not the best. I mean, sometimes you will get scratching radio traffic from the Riverdale Mall area.
And. Worst area would be Rainbow Lake, all right?
Right now, like I say, the bang for the buck, the worst areas are our population centers and the river basins, Alma and St. Louis. Riverdale and Rainbow Lake area, I would put.
Yeah, this thing in Alma won't help anything there or out in Riverdale.
No.
You know, just do better for downtown where the population, yeah, it's my understanding of it. Um, the, the whole deal down there was to get that thing running, that age.
Yes, a, and I, I mean, I had no part in that, I was never ever even made aware that that was occurring. Um, and, and still I don't really get any communication on it, I happened to be on a separate conversation about a different project. And I just kind of asked, hey, what's the status of that radio tower? And they said, oh, well, that's all on hold now because they ran out of money. Um, so.
Well, this, this gentleman down there, he's the guy that got it built.
Yeah, I, I, um, can't think of his name, but I know exactly who you're talking about, Theron.
Oh, he talked the other day that they thought they'd have it run by in September.
Yeah.
And they were, because they're really, people down there are concerned about the radio tower, they're concerned about Verizon.
Yeah.
When can you hang that? And they said they, that they can't hang that thing before they get the eight hundred thing out there or whatever.
It, it, it would be a terrible thing if they didn't, because I mean, I've seen the pictures and I've gone by it. All of the infrastructure that they've laid into that thing, power and all the other utility.
Towers up, the lights blinking, it's, I don't know what it's doing, but it's.
They've had to have invested a lot.
You got a light on top of it.
And all of a sudden claimed that they ran out of money.
Yeah.
I know. State game area is getting better though, and it may be because Saginaw's got a tower or it's kind of lost your plan somewhere down that way.
Well, you know, Clinton put in two towers a couple of years ago, they put some, uh, they put one out, uh, almost on the Saginaw County line out there. Fairfield Township area, and then they come over by the park there where, um, their county park, because I think it's Salem Park or something like that, they put a tower up.
I'm curious though, as if those were state radios, because, uh, Clinton County was on a proprietary, their own eight hundred megahertz.
And yet, yeah, you know, I don't know what they were, I just remembered that was going to cover Clinton County and get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know. Oh, yeah, I know we've got a motion to table, so this doesn't really pertain to the motion, but. I did not see the documentation of the seven thousand dollars a month. So I just want to restate, the total cost would be three hundred and eleven. Plus ten thousand a year for three years, and then you would also have. That you, that nine one one would fund a seven thousand dollar monthly cost.
No, um, the, on the mini-site budgetary cost from the Office of Michigan's Public Safety Communications.
Okay, so I've got, I've got that.
Yep, basically, and I did a little, basically a little bit of rounding up, just trying to account for things, but at the bottom of that, it says the yearly site fee estimate is eighty-five hundred dollars. For N C C monitoring and estimate one thousand dollars time and material for repairs, so that's ninety-five hundred dollars a year.
That's how you get the ten thousand.
And that's how I rounded it up to ten thousand, and the possibility that there could be the recurring charge for fiber backhaul.
Okay, I, I thought I heard some, some talk of seven thousand a month and I, I, so I just.
I said it was ten one one would have seven thousand to pay after the ten thousand.
Yeah, we, we could, nine one one authority would be able to absorb that ten thousand dollars a year after the first three years.
You said that was seven dollars.
Did I say seven? Okay, then that's my bad.
Okay, okay, that clears it up, that, that helps.
Sure.
Alrighty, so we have a motion to table by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bunning, any discussion on that? That'd be the next meeting.
Yeah, I put it right on the agenda first, yeah, I was just going to call that question, yeah.
Alrighty, uh, all those in favor, aye? Oh, aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed, we'll have that table.
And who, you do the agenda or whatever, you'll put it on there for next P, I don't want it to slide away, I just ask them for a little time.
No problem.
And then Dan, I think you had a, a plan or something we need to.
The nine one one plan. Um, in your packet, you should see. Original plan as it's been over the years, up until, I, I can't remember what it was, two thousand and one or something like that. But when I became interim director of nine one one, uh, then, uh. Doug, Sheriff.
Right, right.
Thank you. He requested an audit of the nine one one, uh, you know, and so they came up, they did an audit. Which was financial as well as operational, uh, in, in that they found that our plan was. Inadequate, severely out of date. I began working on it and then twenty twenty happened. Um, so I've gotten back on it towards the end of twenty twenty, uh, working with Cole Stoker and Toski. And in your packet is a plan that has been viewed by myself multiple times, been reviewed by the nine one one authority board. And after application with the state nine one one committee, as well as me reading the GAC thirty-two. The law, the governing law over nine one one and nine one one plans, it's the sole purview of the county commission. To reopen or amend nine one one plans. In short, because again, for whatever reason, attorneys weren't able to get back to me. For today, I'm going to request the board to do, be to just post this. And make it available effective Friday. Comment, and then first meeting in September. Pass a resolution if the board is so willing and there's no comment or no changes necessary to the plan. That's the short of.
When you say post this, is this something that would go like in the Herald or is this something we put out?
I would have to put an ad, yeah, I, I would put an ad as nine one one, I would put an ad in the Herald. Um, and then I would also advertise through our social media and I would have it posted on the county's website.
Yeah.
Comment.
Need a motion on that or that's just something you'd do, would do?
I, I think it would probably be best proper for a motion for you guys to, something along the lines of say that. Well, put it up for public comment and.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bunning, any discussion on that, without for public notice? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Ready, thank you.
I won't take up any more of your time.
So, I believe that brings us up to unfinished business, which is goals and objectives. So you handling this?
That would be me.
Okay.
So.
I didn't even see this, it's on the back of a blank page from Marie.
We're just going to go ahead and, and share the goals and objectives, you guys have had, um, an extra, well, an extra, you've had, now you've had two weeks to. Look at them and possibly, uh, suggest some edits, so that's what this time is. Is if you would like to edit some of the goals and objectives that would, uh, be within the budget book for next fiscal year.
Any discussion on that?
Pardon me?
I think it would be hard to put things in the budget, I mean, when you look at continued staff and professional development. Would, would you just pick a number out, Chris, and say, you know, you would just generate so many dollars to put toward this and figure that into budget? And then each department would do that, you know, it would be the clerk's office or the treasurer's office. But have so many dollars allocated to their department to do that, or, I mean, I think.
Yeah, um. Training is, is one of those things that can, you know, kind of goes by the wayside if you don't actually talk about it. Uh, on a regular basis, and the same with, uh, budgeting for training. When you see a department that hasn't spent any money on training for two or three years. Your, your, your first thought is to put zero in there because they never spent any money, but.
Yeah.
You want to, uh, you know, put that in the forefront, discuss it, make sure that there's money available for it, for continued, you know, professional development.
Well, I, I think there should be funding for, to do that, I mean, nobody, you know, we were talking about cross-training people and things like that. And it takes money to do it, we should be doing that, I think. So I don't know, I don't know, put ten bucks, a million bucks in, whatever, I don't know what the numbers, you, and I guess you would know more about it than that.
Yeah, before COVID.
Just kind of try to figure a number in there to, to put it in the budget.
Uh, and this isn't necessarily for, um, you know, coming up with a specific number. It's things that we want to be able to, um, you know. If you were to ask me, okay, how did we make sure there was funds available for training? I would be able to go into the budget and show you that.
I, I think that's a good thing. In this, in this landfill thing, I think that we, you know, I don't know what it takes, but I've chatted with a couple of these people from, uh. In energy or whatever that is about, um, uh, solar. And, and try to offset some of the costs of that, that dump out there, the, the landfill or whatever that is, you know, I think that's something we need to continue to look at. If we can absorb some of that cost through generating some solar power there or something, if that's a possibility. And I don't know, I don't know if that would take any money probably to do that, it would just be something on our part, I would imagine, what you think.
Yeah, I know Tracy is the, uh, the expert on, on the landfill and the solar, but.
Yeah.
Things that have held us up, I believe the largest thing is the distance that the, uh, substation is from the landfill.
Yeah.
Having to run a, a new, um, I guess whatever you would call it, energy cable. Um, you know, to, to transfer the energy that is, uh, produced.
I think that's kind of a moving target, I think, I figured it would be more of that solar stuff coming after they get this windmill thing wrapped up, I believe. I think they're going to work toward that.
Now, we're going to revisit this again when the budget book is put together, now, I won't, I won't pause on it and I won't read through the whole thing. But there'll be another, uh, there'll be another meeting where this will be before you, I was just trying to get. Some of your general feedback, um, you know, while the document is in edit mode.
Anyone have anything else? Then I believe we need a motion to recess this meeting and move into the financial meeting. Motion by Commissioner Bunting, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Smith, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, nay? Motion, our committee's recessed, uh, we're into the financial meeting then.
Do we need to take, uh, does anyone need, need to take a break? Straight ahead. Just go straight ahead.
Alrighty.
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, well, we have first up on the agenda, uh, cash balances for June, the end of June twenty twenty-one. What you'll see is we've maintained, uh, our cash balance within our general fund, that's typically not the trend that we see. But the reason that we did maintain our, our cash flows because we were able to absorb, uh. Some of our, um, well, some of our sheriff salaries with A R P funds. You, you'll notice that there's a, a dip in our COVID recovery fund, two seven nine, which is our second. Uh, fund that is displayed here. Um, and our third fund, the delinquent tax fund, you see it jumped back up from two million to four point four million. In the, in the prior, uh, finance meeting. Terry and I had discussed how there was an accidental transfer from the delinquent tax fund to a, a drain assessment fund. And that error was reversed and now you see it reflective again in the delinquent tax fund. Any questions based on anything presented? If not, Mr. Lumberman, whenever you're ready, I can move on to the check register.
Move ahead freely.
Okay. So this is the check register for the month of June. I will give you a moment to review it, if you have any questions ready to go, um, go ahead and fire away. And I can look anything up for you that I do not, uh, that I'm not aware of, uh, right off the top of my head.
And then first page, uh. Chris, uh, High Point Community Bank and Isabella Bank, uh, what payments are those?
Uh, we're, tho- those are both, uh, for drain.
Drains, okay.
So is, uh, Joanne Lee that you see right underneath there too?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I figured on that one.
Does she own, does she just own a bond outright herself?
That is not, uh, a bond, that is, um, uh, considered a loan legally.
Straight of a check.
Oh. As I understand it, uh, she invests in our drain funds.
Uh, she invests in several, uh, county drain commissions. Um, and everything is drawn up with, uh, a, a, a law firm. It's, it's legit, I remember the first time that I saw that too.
I had one more here, uh, uh, electronic debit number, eighty-nine eighteen Procom Incorporated. Fifty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty dollars, sixty-five cents.
That was for the upgraded laptops and the patrol vehicles, and that was actually paid for with a grant, a COVID grant from last year. We just, Brian Wagner just submitted that FSR for reimbursement today.
And 617 for $175, the last three numbers of the check, 773, Temple Association 406 Masonic Lodge. What is that?
I'm going to guess that's a restitution payment, where I can look it up real quick. Can you read that check number off for me again, please?
Last three numbers, 773.
Can I get the full? Or hold on, I can look it up some different way. No, we actually rent a hall from them for through the Commission on Aging. Where seniors can go to and eat, eat, I believe, on a daily basis.
So that's monthly. I just hadn't remembered seeing it.
Yep, it's every month.
Chris, I had a question on a bill to Cole Stoker and Toski.
Okay.
And I asked about the bill. It's, it was 33014 was the amount. And it is 101, well, it's 101, I'll see a check number.
Have a date, Sam. You couldn't find it by?
Might need the date.
The C O H O 101, and then it's 33014. I asked for a copy of the bill, and it's a bill. It's a bill for a telephone call with a commissioner regarding a forgery concern. And I'm wondering if the county is obligated to pay that.
You know, I would have to dig into the MCLs. I have, I have found it.
Okay, I don't see like a check number in my my thing here in my iPad, but.
Actually, for some reason, the bill is not scanned in the system.
Well, I I asked for a copy a week ago, or whenever we got these. And it really, it just says here, there was a forgery concern by apparently a commissioner, and for this gentleman to review the materials and a telephone call original policy and confirm whether the commissioner, the original authorization, researching and emailing a case. So I'm just wondering what that's about.
Did you find that?
It's it's a check right here, but it's a bill.
What's the date of it?
It is. I must be looking the wrong time. I mean, I don't have it on my screen here, the check number, or it just says 101, C H, C O H O 1, Cole Stoker and Toski, 33014.
Looks like the date's June 17.
Am I missing the date somewhere?
Big town is first.
It's the, it's like the fourth.
I must, oh, okay, my screen is too narrow. See, Dan, I'm not real technology. It's 617 was it was submitted or paid or whatever.
And your question to me is if that's a legal expense for the county, like.
Yeah, I mean, if a commissioner makes a call, gets a concern about somebody forging something, I want to know if it's a legal expense for the county.
I mean, there's, there's different definitions of expenditures. I mean, there's eligible and allowable. There's misuse, and then there's illegal expenditures. And if you had any concerns that this was is not an acceptable use of county funds, then that would most likely put it in the category of misused.
I guess how would we figure it out if, if, I don't know, have you made the call or you made the call check?
I know I spoke with Mr. Stoker on an issue. I'm assuming that I can as a county commissioner. No, it wasn't that day. It was more recently.
I don't think us as a county board can originally just go and call a attorney up and bill the county. I don't think I have the right to do that. I don't think any of us have that right to do that. I think us as a board has a right to say, you know something? Angie's got a problem with her shoe there, and I want to figure out who did her shoe problem there, and we should vote on it as a commission to say, let's investigate that and get somebody to look at that. I just don't think we have the right to go do that and spend taxpayers' money. That's just my belief. Like I said, on a lot of boards, and single people just can't go out and do that and hire attorneys or call our attorneys and have them bill the county.
Aren't they listed as the county attorney? I don't know where to go with this or where to get the answer, but.
I think they're the county attorney. I think they're stuff like that. But if you have a question about forgery, I mean, now you're talking about a criminal thing, I would think. You know, I don't know if you'll talk to the sheriff or the prosecutor, who you would talk to about it, but I don't think you would call our attorney and ask him about a forgery problem.
Do you feel like something like this, this topic could benefit with the county policy when it comes to consulting with an attorney or or something like that? Is that what you might want to see, Commissioner Smith?
I I don't even know if you need a policy. I just don't think it's our right. I don't think I could call up an attorney and ask them. How come we are, we have wood in our room here? I mean, to have him research it. I don't, I don't think I can do that as a county commissioner. I don't think I have the right to spend taxpayers' money that way. I don't think I have the right to buy something for the county. I don't think I, and what we're doing is we're buying an opinion. And I don't think I have a right to do that. I don't think I have the right to go and buy a tractor for the county. I don't think I have a right, you know, they have Chuck sign for the tractors, and we vote on them as a group.
Chris, is there an existing policy? There is no existing policy that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And do you budget? Do you have like a budgetary item for miscellaneous commissioner costs or?
There are legal expenses budgeted under the Board of Commissioners. But that is where we charge and pay out our our legal fees when it when it comes to the wind turbine lawsuit. Just another example, the Administration Department has legal fees that are budgeted within that department, and the purpose of those legal fees are for when you have the administrator follow up on something, or if you have the administrator have a policy reviewed or something like that.
Well, I think we need to decide sometime on how we take care of this.
Yeah. Would this be a the discussion of this be something for the Finance Committee or for the regular regular session?
Think this would be the regular session. It sounds like it's being objected to in the Finance Committee.
It's about paying the bill.
Bill's already paid.
It's already paid.
And I mean, we'd have to look at it if there's a policy that applies to this even.
Well, let's talk about it more when we go back to regular session. Any more questions about any of the outstanding checks? If not, we can move to the next. Oh, Chris, you're already ahead of me.
I just clicked it over to the June revenue and expenditure report of everything that is reported in here of the most interest to the commissioners, I believe, would be now we have expenditure activity in our Fund 279, the COVID Recovery Fund. And at some point here, once we have a better understanding of what we're planning on spending out of this fund, we'll get some budget amendment in there. So our expenditures and revenues are budgeted for that fund. I'm just going to open it up if you have any questions on any of the funds or any of the balances.
On the 279 fund, the COVID Recovery Fund, we've spent more money than the 705, haven't we?
Yes, we have earmarked more than that. In fact, I just brought this up just in case you ask this question. The green ones, the highlighted green have been earmarked for projects or for pass through. So we're looking at a total of probably of about 1.4 million that has been spoken for of the 7.9.
Well, I think this is a great report.
Thank you.
Sheriff, they got a little fund in here for the deer program. Is that still operating anywhere?
It's not called deer anymore. It's called team. I have a team officer that I see in schools, didn't utilize it last year during COVID because there was an adverse instruction, but yes, I still have a team officer and a team. We don't use it all, I look back.
We had an officer from Alma with a dog that went into our school regularly, was very welcomed.
I don't think there's called team. I think this is a service dog and a.
Yeah, service dog. That's what I was searching for to say.
So if we had the general fund report from last month, because the we were able to take some of the sheriff's expenses and use ARP funds to pay for the sheriff's expenses, is did the total expenditures of the general fund, did they, did they show an offsetting drop since ARP picked up the slack?
Let me pull it up real quick. So we're looking at May 2021, just under $7.1 million. We flip it to June, we're at 7.3. So yes, we do see where the ARP fund was able to lower our, well, not allow, or we didn't show the general fund going up as much as it normally would.
Because there was other other monies going out.
So what we did, so what, yes, so what I did is that $700,000 that you see in Fund 279, the COVID Recovery Fund. I took salaries. I took salaries from other funds that the sheriff runs and moved them into this. So you would have $700,000 went, of salaries and other funds went down, and it went up in the COVID Recovery Fund.
Okay, so we don't see that offset in the general fund.
A couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions on this segment?
Just want to show you one thing real quick. This is April's general fund expenditures, $6.3 million. When we go to May, it jumps to 7.1.
Before you move, Chris, your total number is like 13 million. So there's an adjustment there because we're looking at 12 million number in this month's June, correct? So there was an adjustment there?
I wonder why that did that. I'll have to look into that. That budget doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem to be correct. That should, the budget should be 13 million. I don't know why it's pulling, it's pulling a number that it shouldn't be. But anyway, what I wanted to show you was April's general fund, 6.3 million, May general fund, 7.1, a typical $800,000 increase. And then when we jump to June's, it goes from 7.1 to 7.3. So a portion of that $700,000 is offsetting what normally would have been a much larger $800,000 jump. We're only seeing an increase of $200,000. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So. And then if there are no more questions, I will turn it over to the Treasurer.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, Terry.
Hi. First of all, we'll talk about the investments. As you'll, you've probably noticed, third line down Wells Fargo, that CD matured today. So that has been moved into a Sally Mae Bank CD at 1%, which is the best that I could find. The closest one would have been Sally Mae at point, or I mean, excuse me, Goldman Sachs at 0.85. So that has been done. We also have one that is going to mature August 20. And so I'm doing some research on that. We're putting some feelers out on that one right now, but I just wanted you to be aware that that Wells Fargo did not happen until yesterday, so I didn't have time to get it on the investment report that I was sending to you because I had to have that out prior to. So that change has been made.
On that Sally Mae, what's the maturity date on that then?
That is, that's a five year. We usually have a couple of like those top ones that we go with five year because you get the best, you get the best rate with the longer term, and then we have some on the bottom of the report that you'll see that are only one year. This was one of the five year ones that we had had before. So I moved that over into another five year.
Yeah, you know, the way the government's printing money, I would think interest rates can be quite higher by five years. Yeah, you know, the way the government's printing money, I would think interest rates can be quite higher by five years.
Well, that's the way that this has gone, um, in the past, so I followed with that, and if it wouldn't have been, um, the best rate, I wouldn't have done it, so I, uh, we went with the five year on this one, but the other three down toward the bottom, or four, those will be shorter terms, so when they mature, and we move those. The next report is my district receipt distribution report. Are there any questions on that?
No.
Okay, and then, um, the transfer activity for the month of June?
Are these sweep accounts, most of these accounts sweep accounts, or are you physically transferring money?
I'm physically transferring money, none of these are sweep accounts.
Terry, is there anything of note in this report that you think we should be paying attention to?
No, only, uh, what Chris brought up earlier, the, the correction to the drain, um, on that drain transfer, that's the only thing of significance that I was going to bring up.
Does anybody have any questions on this? Next one.
Pardon me?
All right, I guess that's it, isn't it?
I think it is.
Okay, well, that's good.
Unless anybody's got any questions, that's, that's it for my reports.
Hey, thank you, Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Terry?
Yes.
Before you go, I just have a question about how, how you, we're talking about training and stuff, and budgeting and things like that, but Chris, I mean, that's something that your office is gonna be doing, you think, I mean, do we have some concerns about getting that done there?
Yes, there's training that, um, Diane and I will be attending in September, and there was training that one of my part-time, uh, front staff attended just last week, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess while, while Sam's asking that, one question on that, do you have a training budget? Is that, is that? How, how big is, is the training portion of your budget?
Not, um, let me see, it is not huge. I believe that we have already gone through it, as a matter of fact.
Is there some more training you feel you could use? Should we be looking at that?
Um, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, there will be more training, yes.
You still got a little over a thousand dollars, and, um, Delanco Tax Fund that you haven't tapped into yet.
Okay, that was not, I was looking at the expenditure revenue report the other day, and that's the one that I was looking at for training, but.
I believe this is the first time that, um, that, that in the Treasurer's Office, that the Chief Deputy has gone to the MAC training, is that true?
Yes, that is true.
That's good to hear.
And Cindy, my part-time staff up front, she attended the P R E training, uh, just last week, which is, I don't think, I don't know that that's ever been done either, so.
Hey, any other questions? Okay, I think that's it, Terry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Matt, can you see, is there anybody out there for public comments?
Well, we need to go back to regular meeting.
Oh, we don't ask for public comments in the finance?
Thought we did, yeah, we know.
I, I don't see anybody connected in.
All right, thank you.
Will we go to regular session?
Yeah, you need a motion to go back.
I move that.
One second.
Right, we had got a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All righty, we're back in, uh, regular session, and you're saying you don't see anybody, uh, for public comment? Matt?
I, I do not.
Okay, anybody out there that wants to unmute themselves, public comment, go ahead, any public comment here?
We need a motion for, to approve the expenditures.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Angie. Uh, yeah, then we're looking for a, uh, motion to approve the, uh, uh, spending report for June.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Bunning, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, motion passed.
One more thing, can we, uh, go back to page?
Okay, we never had the gentle, the attorney um, get with us, uh, there was a letter from Tracy on this, if we go back, just way back to page three, that we needed, uh, it was somehow overlooked, and we needed an approval, um, to accept the, um, opioid settlement with Purdue, I think it was, yeah. Any questions on this?
I don't have any questions, but was that attorney supposed to be, or somebody?
He was, and I don't know, at this point, should we try to reschedule this?
Yeah, I think there is.
The settlement, I believe, Chuck, you borrowed.
Yeah, we're asking, uh, I'm asking for approval on it, because we, you missed the deadline, or we, the headline was the other day, and.
It was a little, we're too late.
Yeah, well, we, uh, uh, I use my discretion to say we probably should approve it, and then bring it to this board for ratification.
Well, if you're backed up against the wall, there, we meet every couple of weeks, and you gotta do something, you know, if you agree with it, or whatever, and I'm sure he had an opinion on that, so.
Yeah, and this is Tracy's opinion on it, we just want to do.
I move that we accept it.
So motion to ratify this by Commissioner Smith, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, motion passed. And I believe we've come to the end of our agenda.
Well, just really, one more thing, I'd really like to figure out if we have the right to buy stuff for this town here, or hire a lawyer, or do whatever we want to do, as.
I don't know how to answer that, uh, we need to look and see if there is a policy on that.
So if we could have.
We need to put it on the agenda.
So I guess I would ask to be put on the agenda for the last next meeting.
Trace, trace me back in a week or so.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually what you do, if you have a question or a problem on something like that, go to the Attorney General's Office. Is what you usually do, and then that way you don't have to pay for it, but I don't know if you can do that or not, I think as a chairperson you could, so.
Oh, for an opinion, you're saying?
Yeah, for opinion, I think.
I think I'd start with MAC, maybe I'll check with them.
I didn't see anything in our policies, um, but I'll make a.
I don't remember seeing anything, so.
I'll start combing some other county, um, policies, other, like, Clinton County, Isabella County, I'll start looking to see if, uh, something like this is, is common, that we should have one perhaps.
All right, and I'll call down to MAC and see what they have to say, that doesn't cost us anything, we're members.
Are we members? I don't know if we.
I believe we are.
Yes, we are.
We came back.
I got a magazine from.
Yeah.
I think they do that anyway. Dan, I gotta, I'm gonna fix my computer, and I just haven't had time.
I guess we're adjourned without objection.
What is it called again that you want me to do?